I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the liberal, positive, progressive stance, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks. Go ahead. You can roll forward.
Elder person, Hoppin-Jad? Templey?
Here.
McCarthy?
Here.
Chambers? Walters? Melby?
Here.
Downs?
Here.
Karens?
Here.
You have four.
Excellent. Was this meeting properly noticed?
It was.
All right. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
A second.
A motion and a second, all in favor of approving tonight's agenda. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. Agenda is approved. Items for discussion and action number one, public hearing on the 2024 budget, which this is. Is there anyone present who would like to speak at the public hearing regarding the 2024 city budget?
Are you officially speaking?
Yep, it's open.
Could I ask a question?
You certainly may, Mr. Commissioner.
I hear a lot about the reassessment in Richland Township.
Yep.
Are there plans for reassessment of the city?
Yes, absolutely. That was approved by the council to be done in '23. Just need to find the line-up provider to do it. It will happen if we can get it done in '24. It will happen as soon as we can get a provider to get here and do it. See, Elder Person Walters has arrived. Don't wait for her to be seated.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I missed that.
This is your email. Is that different from the one you gave us? So it's Michael who did tracking this room in my apartment.
Perfect.
Okay. Ask for the second time, is there anyone who would like to speak at the public hearing on the 2024 city budget? Okay, legally required to ask three times, so I will ask for the third time if there is anyone who would like to speak at a public hearing on the 2024 Richland Centre city budget. All right, you're going to entertain a motion to close the public hearing on the 2024 budget.
Motion to close.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All right. All in favor of closing the public hearing on the 2024 city budget? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. Item two, consider approval of the 2024 levy limit increase in total levy. What do you have for us? I asked you.
Well, I have a PowerPoint.
All right, that's great.
So I will go through the PowerPoint, which will talk about the levy and walk through the budget as well. You all have in your email as well as a hard copy before you of the budget with all line items. You received a similar one the other day that was broken down by department. So some of you may prefer to look at it that way, where you're looking at the revenue and the expenses per department more than just every single line item. So you have, you know, options available to you in that regard. The one that you received earlier does take into account, allows us to take into account what the actual levy is required by each of those departments. And you'll notice there are some things grouped together that might look different than have been in years past. And if there's questions about that, we can go over that. But without further ado, we'll get started. And I shall use the microphone. And hopefully you can listen to it. All right, so we'll start off with what you guys already know. But what is a budget? It is a policy document. It's setting the city's priorities. So it's obviously a really critical document. It's what departments, what personnel utilize in order to make decisions and to operate. And so we don't necessarily often think of it as a policy document, but it truly is. You're establishing what projects, what services, what things are important to the city council, important to the city, and by doing that, where departments can focus their efforts. So the budget allows us to appropriate resources, like I mentioned, to various services and projects. It's a financial plan that forecasts our revenues and our expenditures for a period of time. So we have a calendar year budget. We do it annually. And, you know, a budget is a budget. It's our estimation of what's likely to come. There are a lot of elements that we have relatively good certainty that those figures will be what those figures are as listed, but there's always unexpected things. So we're planning for what we know and what we don't know based on historical data, you know, financial performance of the past and trends. There might be changes at a department level that we might not know, but the department does, and so they're able to forecast that. And then through this process, we're able to have transparency as well as accountability. So what does the process look like? So this is a very simplified version, but to give everybody an idea, typically around August, departments are putting together, August, September, they're putting together their requests. So they're going through every revenue and line item that's associated with their department and putting in a figure that they believe is accurate and will allow them to operate. Then after they do that, they meet with the city administrator, review their budgets, refine those budgets, and then they go before their committees and present their budgets to the committees for another review. After that, we go through budget hearings with the finance committee, where finance is auditing all of the budget requests, meeting with each department head, submitting their requests, and then providing, you know, sometimes direction, that sort of thing. But ultimately, their goal is to make a recommendation to council for adoption. So then we get to this point that we're at tonight, which would be a public hearing. We're setting the mill rate and adopting a budget. After this is complete, then it's implementation. It's a policy, now the personnel need to implement it. And then there are checks throughout the year, monthly revenue and expenditure reports. You know, committees are monitoring budgets. Department heads are monitoring the budget. I'm monitoring the budget. And then we're making adjustments as we need to and addressing unexpected things as they come. So with that in mind, I just want to take a moment to review some of the highlights and accomplishments that we had in 2023 as a result of the budget that was adopted. So we have been going through an accounting software, went through an accounting software conversion, and there was a lot of things to learn, a lot of challenges with that conversion. However, after going through this budget cycle right now, I can say without a doubt that I believe we made the right decision with the software that we made. It improved this process tremendously. So I'm very thankful that that decision was made. Established a shared community resource officer with the school. There was the transition of economic development, where the city solidified economic development here. We've initiated and are at the tail end. It's just pending that final report on the traffic study that you heard about last Tuesday. We installed new dike lights, which have, they've received a lot of compliments. A lot of folks have been quite pleased with those dike lights. We're on new carpet, which is a huge improvement. We've contracted assistance for financial services. That's been a tremendous benefit to us. We sold a city-owned lot, one of the infill lots, installed new security cameras in our parks. We were having a lot of vandalism and a lot of issues affecting those dike lights we had to replace. So those security cameras have made a big difference, whether or not it's coincidence that we haven't had vandalism since. It doesn't much matter. We're just not experiencing it, so that's good. We saw, I think probably, a record number of retirements. So there were six retirements by my last count just in this year. And so we have a group of people that all really started relatively at the same timeframe that have since retired. And so we've lost a lot of historical knowledge and assets in those folks. So now we're working to replace and train and rebuild that. We recently had the restructuring of the clerk treasurer's office. We formed the Department of Public Works, where we took the buildings and grounds and the streets and merged them into a department reporting to a committee, the Public Works Committee. Completed Phase Two of the street project. We authorized and initiated the hotel feasibility study, which I think is complete and pending a report. Purchased a new squad vehicle. We went through the branding process. We finished it and we started implementation of that branding. And you could see the logo on our agendas and many other places. And we started advertising on a new digital billboard. So that's very exciting. We've contracted zoning services. And also Erin has been able to get Badger books to help improve efficiencies and streamline the process during elections. So a lot, a lot of things that we've accomplished in the last year, and this is not an all-inclusive list. There are many others. But just to remind everybody of all the work that you guys have done and made possible. So looking forward. When we are making the budget, we have to know where we've been, but we also have to know where we're going. So in order to do that, you know, we've discussed at committees, you know, with personnel, with council, discussed a lot of the plans, projects, and things we'd like to accomplish. And so again, not an all-inclusive list. However, this is a good idea of the things that we're pursuing, which will be possible with the budget that you have before you. So as was already mentioned earlier tonight, a revaluation. So we are going to be going out for an RFP, trying to solicit services for that, and that should hopefully go out in early January. We have Phase Three of the three-phase street project to finish next year. We've applied for and are likely to receive a grant for infrastructure extension. So that might occur in 2024 or it could be later, but it's at least on our radar pending approval of that grant. Continuing to support, promote, and support the expansion of housing. We all know that we have a shortage of housing, and it's a tremendous issue affecting pretty much all facets of our community and functions. From a department level, there's some equipment that needs to be replaced, so a leaper, a tractor, a zero turn. Continuing on with dike light replacement, we are doing that, started in segments. So we did the first segment, and then in 2024, would like to do the second part of that. Prioritizing employee training, recruitment, retention, as I mentioned with those retirements. It's only obvious that those are priorities. Continuing to evaluate our policies, ensure our standard operating procedures are executed in alignment with the priorities that you all have set forth. We are looking at improving technology. We made some improvements. We've got a TV here that we didn't always have, but we've got a lot of room for improvement in that regard. Installation of a generator at the municipal building. Right now, there is a generator, but it doesn't service the entire building. So as you might imagine, if we had an emergency situation, this might be the hub. This might be the emergency operations center. It's really important that we have power and that we have internet as well, which this would enable us to do. There's going to be a request to purchase another squad vehicle. There's going to be a furnace that, two furnaces that we need to have replaced at this building. Reconstruction of the Jefferson Street parking lot. That's been something that's been talked about for a few years now. But it's looking like 2024 is the year for that. Continued engagement in financial management services, and that's tied to as well as the TIF creation. Talked about creating TIF, a TIF district or two TIF districts, and we've already got the wheels in motion in pursuing that. We've talked about expanding our capabilities with GIS. I know not every committee and not the full council yet, I believe, but we've talked about how do we utilize GIS to improve how people are able to access information about the cemetery or to find plots? And so utilizing that technology that we already do utilize, but making it so that it works for us to an even greater degree. And then looking at how do we improve delivery of services? How do we reduce our expenditures? How do we do that? And right now, we have a really opportune time to be thinking of that, although we should always be thinking about that. But with things happening at the state level, there's opportunities now for shared services. So if we can partner with other entities, whether that be, you know, the county or something like that, to share services, there's opportunities to receive a subsidy, more or less, for doing those sort of things. So we are looking at ways to do that. Does anybody have any questions about those priorities? Did I miss any that are really important? Cover. So this next slide is really just meant to be a snapshot if we look at 2023 to 2024. And this can get confusing sometimes because your taxes, when we talk about 2023 budget, those were payable the prior year. So we're always payable the following year. So it's kind of like you're behind. But the budget that was adopted last year had a levy of almost $2.4 million, with revenue projected to be at about nearly $7.6 million, expenditures at about $9.8 million, which resulted in a city mill rate of 904, the net mill rate. So after we factor in the credits, that's your first dollar lottery, other state credits, and also the other taxing jurisdictions, that resulted in the mill rate of 29.55. So your estimated tax bill, based on the 2023 budget, $2,623.03. And that's, the mill rate is per $1,000 of assessed value, and then that estimated tax bill is based on a property valued at $100,000. So that's just to give you kind of a snapshot idea. Whereas when we look over here to 2024, you'll notice our tax levy is less than it was last year. So it's a reduction in levy. Our revenue is much higher than it was last year. And there's various reasons for that, and we can dive into it as we go on. But also, our expenditures are much higher than they were the year prior, not to the extent as the revenue is. But that makes the city's mill rate, it's 905, however, it's less than a cent. The increase is actually less than a cent. Then our net mill rate is 29.67. So it's slightly increased from the year prior. However, your tax bill actually goes down. And so this is really as a result of the credits, the credits that are applied on here. So that's a huge win, a huge win. Now, this is a four-year comparison. If we look at net tax bill based on $100,000 of assessed value, so you can see the mill rate from 2020 to 2023, the first dollar in lottery credit, and then what the levy would be on that $100,000 of value. So the mill rate is increasing. The credits, though, are also increasing. And it was a pretty big jump this year that we're seeing. And so the tax levy, it's been on the incline. Your tax bill has been going up. However, this year, it's actually gone down. And the little graphs there are just trying to depict that. So some things are going up, some things are going down. But overall, your tax bill should decrease. So again, our mill rate, we have the city's mill rate, but we also have other taxing jurisdictions. So we've got the school district, Southwest Tech, Richland County, and then there's state credit. And so when we look at all of those in 2023, so what we're talking about right now for the budget, we're at 905. The school district is at $13.29. Southwest is $1.35. Richland County, $8.30. State credits are a reduction from those numbers. So if we add them up, reduced by the state credit, you get the net mill rate. And you'll notice in this breakout that we had less than a cent of an increase. The school district went up by $1.29, but then Southwest stayed the same, and the county reduced by 50 cents. So the city and the county, or actually rather, Southwest and the city remain pretty much the same. The county had a reduction, but the school had an increase. And so that's why it's important when we're thinking about what our tax burden might be as citizens to recognize that the mill rate is a piece of it and a very important piece, but we have to factor in also our credits and those things. And it also really demonstrates that although one entity or a couple entities might not raise taxes, another might raise them in such a way that it kind of cancels out any reductions others might have. So how all of these entities work together is a really important thing for our community. So levy by debt, this is looking, or levy by department, rather. This is looking at when we take our revenues and our expenditures by department, and you're kind of factoring the net, the net result. So what's left over after other non-tax levy? Revenues pay for things happening in a department. That's where we're getting these figures. So what the taxpayers are actually paying for by department. So if any department has a grant or it has some sort of state aid or something like that, that's been factored in. This is purely just the levy, how the levy is being applied after it's received. And I don't think it should be any surprise. Police and public safety, that's taking up about 26% of the levy. And I think that's probably true in most communities where you would see that category taking up the bulk of the levy. The next largest one would be capital outlay, so infrastructure, equipment replacement, those sort of big expenses. That would be our next category. And then the other largest group includes insurance, legal, auditing, debt service. So those categories are where we're experiencing the greatest costs. When we look at gross department expenditures, so same categories as we just looked at, but gross. So we're not factoring in the revenue. This is just 100% of the cost, not taking into consideration at all what the revenue is. You can see what that looks like. So police in 2024, $1.9 million is the gross cost for that department. About $1 million for the insurance, auditing, debt service, et cetera. Streets, $1.2 million. And this will also include things, you're looking at this, it's including things where we know we're only going to spend that amount of money if we have a grant or some sort of assistance to pay for it. So it's not necessarily we're just writing a check or handing over cash. There is some sort of clause, if you will. So depending on what you prefer, this is just another way to look at what we just saw. So this is a chart. It's kind of tough to get all those categories on a chart that you can read. But you can see that chart is reflecting those things. But this is gross again. So when we looked at what the levy is paying for capital outlay, it was about 19%. You can see here, it's 43. That's because some of the items in our outlay are to be grant funded. And so this isn't taking, again, that's not taking that into account. This one's tough to read as well, but this is going over revenue. And so these are the various places that the city receives revenue. You know, everybody is aware of tax levies, so our tax revenue. But we receive revenue in other places, and it's applied to these departments. So the same departments we talked about with the expenditures. How much revenue are those departments receiving to offset those expenditures? So that's a breakdown of that. And the next slide is that in a pie chart. So again, we can see right there, 33% grants. So we had a lot of expenditures tied to that grant money. State aid, 16%, and tax levy, 19%. And then you'll notice most of the other categories where we would receive revenue are anywhere between 0% and 5% to make up that remaining 32%. Some of them, you know, sale of land or vehicles. If we're not necessarily anticipating the sale of a vehicle, we're not going to be budgeting for the sale of the vehicle. So you can see there's 0% related to that. And that's, I think, because the practice for that example has been to trade in versus sell outright. But there's some things like that. Interest income is one I'd like to point out. 2% doesn't sound like a lot, but this year, we've received far more interest than we ever anticipated. And so 2% of all revenue is actually a pretty healthy amount. So again, all taxing jurisdictions, just to give you another example of what that looks like. So at an assessed value of 125, 175, or 225. The city's portion of that is the first line. So at a mill rate of 905, you know, at a value of 125, it's just over $1,100. That would be the city's portion. Whereas in that same scenario, the school's portion, based on their mill rate, is over 1,600. Southwest Tech is 168, and the county is $1,037. So when you add all of those up, you get your gross mill rate. So the 31.98, that's our gross mill rate, which would equal the $3,997. Deduct your credits, and then you get the net mill rate and then your estimated taxes. So again, another way to look at it. So at $125,000 in a pie chart, this is how it's split or divvied up between the entities. Levy limit? So our allowable levy limit is $2,525,438. So that's what the state says, we are allowed to levy. What we are requesting in the budget that you have is not 2.5, it's $2,375,000. So that's, even though we are able to levy up to the 2.5, we're only levying 2.3 in this budget. So that's a difference of over $150,000. And so that's why our mill rate increased less than a cent. And so this was not by accident and not easy necessarily. So through, you know, budget hearings and a lot of communication with you all, the goal or the priority of this budget was to not raise taxes. And so with that in mind, department heads were asked to really sharpen their pencils and really tighten up things and not request anything that was not a need. And so we were able to accomplish a reduction in the levy from prior years and a savings to the taxpayers. And it's not necessarily something for you all to take lightly, that that feels good. It's great that we're able to do that for our taxpayers. However, it's a difficult decision for any municipality to make due to the law. When you reduce your budget, it's not necessarily a one-time reduction. You've permanently lowered your ability to levy. So it's a very significant decision, especially when we know that there are a lot of things in the future that are going to be priorities or initiatives of the city, whether that's, you know, replacing existing infrastructure, streets, all of those things, or housing and our ability to spur economic development. A reduction like this is something that we should think of as permanent and serious. But we were able to accomplish that because everyone was dedicated to accomplishing that and willing to really take a hard look, scrutinize things, and be good stewards of the dollars that we have, fortunately have available to us. And so hopefully, we can maybe not necessarily continue the trend of leaving an available amount of money of that amount, but to be very conservative in how we spend dollars so that our need to finance operations doesn't grow as expeditiously as it could. So summary. Our total revenue that we're forecasting, over $12 million, which is the same amount as our expenditures, so we have a balanced budget. We have an allowable levy of just over $2.5 million. We're requesting to have our actual levy set at 2.3, just over, which would make our mill rate $9.05, which then results in a gross mill rate of 31.98, but a net mill rate of 29.67. And in the revenues, as you all have looked over your documents, and there have been some questions about changes, there are a lot of changes that you'll notice in those documents as far as maybe the year prior didn't show any money budgeted towards a specific line item, but this year it does. And that has to do in part with the accounting software conversion. So we're trying to streamline and best use the codes that we have. have available and make sure we're coding things in the best spot available. So some things are inline items that they weren't before because we're sort of reorganizing, resetting, tied to that conversion and our opportunity to do this. So that's a huge part of the equation when you're noticing those differences. Another element of it is that we weren't including some forecasted revenues in in the line items in the budget. And so we made sure to include any and all revenues that we're aware of that we may get. We've also made sure to include those grant opportunities. So there may have been times in the past where we thought, oh, maybe we'll get a grant, but there's no certainty in that. However, we we were still having an expense for that. So now we're just making our revenue match our expense because we know we won't take that action without that grant. And so that's, that's a big, big part of the increase. In addition to that, we have more grant, potential grant opportunities before us really raising that. The infrastructure expansion grant is about 2 million just on its own. So that drove that number up as well. And so with that, if anybody has any questions, I am happy to take them.
You have a question on the allowable versus actual levy. So you mentioned that actual is the 2.375. So will that be our allowable next year?
Not necessarily that exact number, but there's an equation that they use. But when you, when you don't use the maximum, there's likely to be a reduction. We just don't know what exactly it'll be next year.
But not, not lower?
No.
Not lower? Okay, so maybe somewhere in between?
Correct. And, you know, if if the levy, our levy limit, if it is not allowing us to conduct operations, or I think easier you can think about, there's a street project, there's infrastructure that we need to do, we need to take care of it, we can use financing, we can have debt service that would allow us to exceed the levy limit. So if we chose to do that, we could, that's obviously not something that anyone here, at least that I'm aware of, would want to pursue. If we're able to do it within the limit, that's when we do it and how we do it. But that is, you know, just part of the equation. If it came to that, we could take on debt to allow us to engage in some projects that that you all have deemed critical or important enough to do so, which would then in turn raise property taxes likely to a greater degree than if you just went with the maximum allowable debt or levy.
It definitely would. That's happened with the county several times. So we don't have a projection of how much that might lower the allowable levy for next year? We don't know that?
No, it's not going to be lower less than what it is this year.
Yeah, I understand that, but like how much below what was allowable this year? Would you just be guessing if we put a number on that?
At this point, I would be, yeah. So that's really, you know, that's a question for you all. If you would be, if you're comfortable with this, then it's ready to go. But if if you're thinking, we don't want to leave those dollars on the table because we know that there is going to be a consequence in the future, we just don't know to what degree you could choose to maximize the available levy, to get the 2.5 plus million dollars to levy that. And then those dollars that you would levy for, they need to be appropriated. So what are they going to be used for? They can't just, we just can't get them and not have a purpose. So if there was a, for example, street overlays, if that was something that the council wanted to allocate more money towards, that could be a use for that. You'll notice that there was more money allocated for for street overlay projects this year than there had been in the years, in years past in in the budget. But things like that, that could be done.
I think in prior years, and maybe I just didn't notice it in this budget, we have allocated a certain amount of money for possible, the bridges by the campus. Is that in here?
It is. It's located in the outlay section. That's a, Karen, I'm glad you brought that up because that's one of those projects where, you know, we this year had discussions about, related to that. And so it's something that has been on the city decision makers' minds. And so it's been included in the budget, but it's also one that with what we're aware of, there's potential grant funding and other revenue sources for that. So that wouldn't necessarily be the entire cost coming right out of the taxpayers.
If we decided we wanted to take advantage of the maximum amount, what does that make the tax base look like then?
We would need a little bit of time to crush the numbers.
I think.
I know, but you already had it. I didn't, and I should have, I should have. Unfortunately, I didn't anticipate that that would be the direction that we went. And I, I would say, I don't have a crystal ball. I can't guarantee or promise anything. However, I feel quite confident that we're not making a decision that we will regret in the future by doing what we're doing today if the proposed levy amount is what is adopted.
Can you give us the maximum amount again?
Yes. So the allowable levy is 2,525,438.
Explain why you don't think it's a bad choice.
As I mentioned earlier, you know, in our, in our past budgets, there were some things that were not included within the budget that make a difference as far as revenue goes. And so this year, we were able to fully capture, I believe, all of the revenue sources. And so knowing that, it's, it's not that we had a windfall or anything like that, we just weren't capturing it before. And so that impacted what we thought we had available to spend. And so now we have a much greater understanding of that, handle on that. And at this point, department level budgets are not, they've been asked to remove any excesses, and they have to a great degree, but they're still not so restrictive, or or there's not a reduction in their budget. So they're still able to operate and have a little bit of room to be able to respond to the unexpected. So we're in a really healthy position at a department level and an overall level.
Then a couple of things happened this year that really helped. The first one is the state's decision to adjust the revenue share, which I believe the city got an extra 300,000.
Yes.
And then with the change in interest rates.
Yes.
I mean, that can go away too.
Correct.
I mean, it wasn't happening for how it wanted until this year. So it's great to have it now. I'm a little hesitant to count on it in the future because nobody knows where rates will go. They were down for years and years, negligible for a long, long time. But the state revenue share, as far as we know, is permanently changed, or at least for the foreseeable future. As to Melanie's question, I would, I would like to know what the difference would be in taxes based on the two, you know, if we, if we went there or we did not.
I mean, we'd be talking about cents.
Per thousand?
Right. And that's why I'm.
Right, right.
If you tell me it's going to affect my property taxes, instead of, you know, going up one cent, it's going to go up three cents, I'd be like, eh. Now, if you tell me it's going to go up $3 per thousand, then I'd say, I don't think so.
I mean, one, Ashley just used an example, and she wasn't campaigning for it, just an example as a way, if there was a need in the future to handle city needs to borrow money. The concern I have there, that has made waves with the county over and over again, and caused pretty significant property tax increases when they did it. And the thing is, we have fewer taxpayers to spread debt amounts a month. And the county has 17,000 people, the city has 5,100 people. So borrowing would hit the city tax rate a lot harder than the county, depending on how much you borrowed. But there's just a lot of those people to share that burden. If we did that, it's, I know Ashley was just using example, there's nothing wrong with the example, it's just something I want people to be aware of. I would hate that as a tactic, borrowing in emergency, because it's just, there's not enough of us in the city to not make that sizable if we had to do it. I mean, it depends on how much we borrowed, but you've heard it every time the county did it, and Any other thoughts on that topic? Okay, well, I mean, as presented to you tonight, the budget that Ashley has prepared, does the, what is listed up there is actual levy. Okay, so the A decision in this budget process is, are you comfortable doing that? It's a key decision. And Ashley said that in the first place, it is. It's a key decision. The state would allow 2.525, and she's asking us to, asking you to approve 2.375. That will cause some reduction on what the state will allow next year. Don't know how much, but it will. The only way that would be a problem, which can happen, we've seen, we've seen inflation take off and so forth before. I mean, if you end up needing money, can you, what would, what causes that allowable levy to increase? Are there things like when we have more buildings and so forth, will that grow, what the state will allow?
So you're, you're not new construction?
Exactly, exactly. So it's a little tricky when you say that, because it's a critical point in in the way the state set us all up to fund ourselves. Some of the bigger projects we're aware of may require TIF financing, which then impacts some of that. So there's a lot going on here.
So if we increased expenditures by 150,000 and then increased the tax levy to the 2.5, the mill rate would increase from 9.05 to 9, to 9? I believe it would be about 9.33, 9.33, around there.
From 9, whoop, 9.05 to 9.33?
Yeah, so it's, let's just say it's approximately 30 cents.
Per thousand?
Per thousand.
Might that be worth it to have extra money in case something comes up?
It might be. That's a decision for the bunch of you to make.
So, and we, we can't, we can't levy more than what we need. And so it's not that we would be able to increase, to maximize the available levy. It wouldn't be possible just to do that and then stick it in a savings account for a rainy day. That, that is not allowed. We would have to have a specific purpose for why we're levying those dollars, which is to the point of if we had, you know, a street project, or if we had, we wanted to increase overlays, that example, that would be a specific project that those dollars would be used for.
Without me pulling my email budget back open, do we have money budgeted in here, in here for demolition of buildings?
Yes.
How much did we do? I'm sorry, I guess pull it out.
Well, and that's included within the outlay. And so you have totals in the outlay amount, but if you'd like, I can give you some more information about that. So we had $48,000 for demolition, but then increasing it, so it would be about $75,000 available for demolition.
Okay, that's more than we did before.
So a question, Ashley, on the outlay for 2024, from 2023 to 2024, on two street projects, I believe? So I'm looking at a 22% deficit or decrease?
So what we have in the outlay planned for street projects would be phase three of the current project. And if there were a new street that we maybe needed to borrow for, or there was grant funding or something like that, we're planning for a street. And you can think about, in the event of perhaps Story Field or something like that, we have the dollars available, or at least are planning to spend dollars towards that.
But not, not as much as we had planned on spending in 2023?
So previously, the 1.5 million was set aside for the purpose you're referring to. This year, it'd be one.
Couldn't we set it up for just the street improvements? To add the 150,000 doesn't go very far, does it?
No, not necessarily, no.
Not as easy, doesn't. You're right. We, we're in that pretty fast. That's, that's why we.
That would be one of the.
But we could do that, correct? We have phase three already plotted out.
Right. And so it's a matter of, that is something that could be done. The 150 we're talking about could be put towards that purpose, but also what is realistically going to happen in 2024? Are we doing that? And the reality is, it's very unlikely. I mean, for phase three, we've already started the the bidding process and and working with, getting qualified contractors approved and that sort of thing in order to get it scheduled in in 24. So realistically, are we in a position where anything is likely to come to fruition? And then if it's not, are we being perhaps transparent and and honest with the taxpayers?
Well, if we don't do it, we don't have the money to do anything that comes up then above and beyond what you have, right?
So, well, not necessarily. So we have, we have a contingency fund. It's 125,000 available in the contingency, so for unexpected things. We also have in our state pool accounts, where we do have money available if we need to use it. And there's, you know, balances for street projects specifically in there, and amongst many other things. So it's not like we don't have any money available in savings or anything like that. We're not, and if disaster happened, we do have that ability to borrow. So for example, if there was a project that came before you this year that you just don't know about yet, or we haven't heard of it, or something like that, and it was something that you all were highly motivated to see done, but it required maybe a development incentive, right now with where we're at, if you had to borrow money, then maybe, right, taxes would go up. But you're making that decision when there's a need versus really uncertain about whether or not you're going to need it, but just in case, we'll have it in there and then maybe, maybe not use it. That way, at least, where we have the budget right now, we're confident in, by where, I mean, through the process and working with the departments. Billy might feel differently. He's here, he could mention something. But working through that process, I feel confident that we have adequately budgeted for the, for the things that we need in order to maintain or even improve services that we're providing currently, and taking on new initiatives and projects where the concern that 150,000 would be a make or break, or harm us so much so that we would really regret this moment, I don't have that feeling.
Ashley, could you explain possibly, you know, when we budget for something, it doesn't get used, and it ends up in a state pool, and how that money is earmarked for whatever it was, maybe that would help?
Yeah, that's. Yeah, that's a very good point. So either a project doesn't happen, or we had a project that came in under budget or something like that. So that, you'll see that with outlay, with the street projects, or things like that, where a certain amount of dollars are budgeted towards that specific project, and they need to be used for that purpose, unless there's an amendment and a reallocation process. So oftentimes, what we'll see, because we're working with estimates, we don't have hard figures on anything really that we're doing, but it's to the best of our ability, we're anticipating and working with our estimates. So we're putting those dollars in a, in a pool of money for a project. But when they come in under budget, the money that's remaining stays in that pool unless we reallocate it to something else. And so over time, it's, it's not like there's millions of dollars just hanging out that, from projects that came in under budget. But over time, you know, that adds up, and it can be used towards projects again. And so we do have, in the treasurer's report, Aaron just gave a treasurer's report on Tuesday, where he talked about those state pool accounts and what the balances are. So that's kind of encompassing those items, as well as we have other, there's, you'll notice on the treasurer's report, there's a landfill long-term care. And so we have a landfill that's decommissioned, if you will, but we still have financial obligations going forward, you know, long-term. So we've set aside money for that purpose. And so we're, we're preparing for those sort of things. And to that point, in our outlay, there are certain items on there where we're doing just that. We're trying to plan ahead and prepare for long-term or long, long-range maintenance that's coming up. That was a discussion had in finance about upcoming maintenance for the Aquatic Center. You know, at, at this many years, you have to do this, at that many years, you have to do that. So dollars have been set aside for those sorts of things as well.
Why don't you use the example of the parking lots that were supposed to be paid, didn't get paid, and maybe that would help some that don't sit through the budget process and finance?
That's an excellent example, thank you. And the Jefferson Street parking lot is one of those. And so that had been something that had been budgeted for, dollars were earmarked for it, went into that outlay account, but they were not spent, because this project was not completed. And so technically, that, the money that was already allocated for that project could be used rather than budgeting for it again. Did that satisfy you? Did I answer that question?
The money's still earmarked for that project, and it has to be used for that project. And to get it allocated for something else, it's quite a process.
Do you have, it's a resolution.
A resolution.
Do you have a copy of Marilyn's treasurer's report, the polls you pulled up?
We can pull that up, yeah.
And just explain that, because that was one thing that was hard to re-understand, we budgeted for something. We have whatever, three hundred thousand or whatever's for those parking lots. We didn't use it, and then it's still sitting there, so we can still use it.
Yeah, it's in state pool four.
All right, so I'll actually just pull up the pool accounts for us to take a look at.
So this is another special.
We can now speak in private with these, a lot of stuff.
I'm budgeting out so much. Well, this is the actual street projects, you know, always, that's like. Like the, the case in time, street, you know, like they're doing work.
I just have to figure out how much change.
So we have, we have set aside, like those two street. Those are all what they're calling all the way. Yeah, so we, where's the money? Yeah, there's all those. So that's an antique hall always in the street apartment. So it's not, it's not, um, that's a big project, it's big.
Ashley, are you pulling up the treasurer's reporters, Aaron, here to?
I'm gonna pull up, rather than the treasurer's report, I'm gonna pull up the actual pool accounts.
Yeah.
So let's see, that'll show up. Maybe. I'm sharing my screen, but I think I need to exit.
Because you can't just, it's just materialize a street project like, oh, maybe we can put a street over there. We can't do this.
All right. So this is just a summary of pool four. And you can see the various things that are listed in there. So there was, there was dollars allocated for elections, for police radio, siren replacement, the parking lots. And that one, since it was mentioned, you can look at the balance. So there's dollars available to, to utilize there if you either reallocate or otherwise.
So in the parking lot example, there was three city parking lots that we were gonna do all that year, and was that COVID year? And we paused, we only did one of them. So there's two left, so there's a balance of four hundred and one thousand eight?
Four, three.
Four, three, eight. I can't read it.
How hard is it to get it reallocated then?
Huh?
If you wanted to use it for something else, how hard is it to get it reallocated?
You have to do a budget resolution. It can be done.
What is the pool that can't be? Remember when you had a certain amount in software for the clerk's office? And it was allocated that, isn't there a pool that you can't?
Well, so, I mean, and this is getting into, well, what's restricted, what's designated, what's undesigned?
Yeah, those.
So restricted, it's just that, it's restricted. And you can think of the landfill long-term care fund as restricted, as we can't reallocate that. We are required to have a certain amount of money set aside for that purpose. But these other things, like the ones that are listed here, these have been decisions of the governing body, that we want to execute these projects, and we're putting dollars towards them, rather than the state or something like that saying, you have to have money for that. So the, the money that you see in here, you could reallocate and, and put to use on different projects. You could choose to do that.
What's the total of pool four? One point six.
And provided all of these figures are up to date and all of that, I didn't verify with, with our acting treasurer.
Yes, as of eleven, well, November thirtieth, one point, one million, six hundred fifty-eight thousand, forty-five dollars.
And the mayor had mentioned earlier, interest. It, it didn't start increasing until August of last year. But you can see in this pool account, there is, that's, that's interest earned on these dollars between that timeframe.
So, I mean, I like the idea of being responsible and conservative with the taxpayers' money. And yes, if we don't have plans today through this whole budget process, you know, then we shouldn't be. The part that is, you know, is towards that crystal ball to figure out what we might have for next year. And we fight so hard with the mayor's term of net new construction.
All the time.
That, are we, yeah, it's, it's that crystal ball. And are we kind of penalizing that process or that formula? Because we have to depend on the state for that formula not to, and you said it wouldn't go any lower. You know, are we, you know, but are we talking seventy-five thousand? Or, you know, is it, could it be the full hundred and fifty that we don't have for next year? That we might have a project for, so it's really, yeah, it's one of those.
I completely agree with you, and that's, that's why I would have been remiss if I failed to mention it, right?
Yeah.
And so I'm glad that you guys are, are being very conscientious of that and trying to make sure that the decision you're making is the right one. And, and I'll also mention again, you know, we do have very healthy balances. We have.
We do.
We're in a very, very, very good position. And so that might not always be the case, to your point. It could change and quickly. But where we are right now, we're in a very positive, healthy situation. We're not having to even have conversations about cutting any services or reducing anything. We're having opposite conversations, you know, how do we improve? Or how do we expand or do something we didn't do before? Because we actually can, unlike, unfortunately, so many other municipalities. And at the same time, we're in a healthy position, and no one is trying to spend frivolously. So there's a, a great degree of respect and responsibility that is being demonstrated through the process.
There are some, just some examples that I'm aware of. I won't name them because it wouldn't be prudent to do that. But we're getting economic development opportunities we were not seeing. And some of that will likely be before the council in the next few months, as an example. Somebody wants to build some houses, somebody wants to build some apartments. There are a couple of large retailers looking at Richland Center. There is somebody that wants to build some housing for like traveling nurses and things like that. And they all call me, or come and see me, and then they come and see Jason, and they ask him if there's money for this, and the answer is almost always, no, there's not. There's not, they, the knee jerk, TIF and grant. Is there a TIF, is there a grant? Well, if the project is small or in the wrong area, it's not gonna be TIF. And grants, well, everybody thinks there's a grant for everything. Sometimes there is, and sometimes there's not. One thing that could be done, if we wanted to do that, is put some money additional aside for projects like that. When people come down here and they want to expand their local business, or they want to bring a new one with costs where they are to build something or move something, they're very, very high. So everybody always is asking for, so we just had, I sat one down yesterday. And they were told, we don't have money for you. And, you know, whatever, it's not, it's the truth. A possibility, if the council's interested in it, would be to additionally fund those kinds of things when they come up, because they're coming now, guys. We were in a different place, it's not that nobody's interested. It's, it's people trying to figure out how to pay for what it takes to do what they want to do.
So I would add on to what you're saying, which I agree with what you're proposing. And, but I would add a slightly altered version, which would be, if the decision is to increase the proposed levy that you had, whether that's by fifty thousand or the maximum available, those dollars could be used for prepaying debt. So you can see on your screen right now, debt service. And so what we're anticipating to spend for debt service, I will note, pardon me, I should share this, because we're recording, and Mark isn't with us, so hopefully he'll be able to watch this, if not through the other recording mechanism. So I'll share this. So if you look at this retirement liability, one, it's included within the debt service. I mean, it is, we're obligated to that, but it's not debt service in the same way as a bond. It's different, but it's included in that area. And I'll move this out of your way, so you can actually see it. So we have about five hundred fifty thousand approximately in debt service that we are budgeting for. You could prepay some of that debt, utilizing those dollars towards that. And that way, it's a specific thing that you're, you're appropriating the money for. It's, it's of assistance. And in the event that we had to take on debt, we, we don't necessarily have to be prepaying anymore. We could reallocate to pay for the debt service that we would incur from a new development. And I think the part of the equation that the mayor is explaining is that requests for development incentives are not small. They're not a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. They are definitely going to require some sort of debt service.
I mean, we've seen requests that aren't huge, but a typical request right now, three million, a lot of that. And that, I mean, that's for a significant project, okay? But what they're trying to pay for there, a lot of times, is infrastructure. So streets or utility hookups, streets and utility hookups. For instance, if you wanted to build a new street of houses right now, I think you'd faint when you saw what it cost just to do that much of it. And so that's usually where the expense is and what they're asking the city to help with. Then you do get into TIF conversations, because the dollars are so big. We do have plenty of borrowing capacity, about what, two-thirds of it? Available of what we're allowed to do. And as far as TIF goes, we've got all kinds of room there too, because we only have one open one right now. So I just, it's a great philosophical question. I'm all about not raising taxes, I pay them too. I, I think about that all the time, I suspect everyone in here does. It's how to not raise taxes beyond what we need to do. I just don't want to accidentally hurt our people by trying so hard to do that, that we put a lid on things when we didn't need one. You know, coming, looking forward, you know, inflation has run hot for a while. They're cooling it off, but it's not cool, it's cooling. We'll have some things to do in the next year that won't be in this budget, but in the year after, there will be a new police union contract in the meantime, things like that. I don't know. It just, you fight so hard to grow through new construction, which is the mechanism the state gives us. There's something strange to me about reducing after you've spent all this time trying to grow. It doesn't mean just spend money to do it. I have one question, Ashley, you were asking, I don't remember, a couple of times. When we've done the street overlays, do we have a current accurate list of streets that need help?
We do have a list that, prior to Terry's retirement, that he provided. However, I think that we need to expand that and do a review of that.
Exactly. One thing that I know our people love is when we fix their street or improve their street. That's a great example, whoever brought it up, personally, you did. Great example, same with curves. And Karen has pointed out in the past correctly, that some of them downtown are in really rough shape. And we're addressing it, and that's already budgeted. But if there's more of that kind of work to do without, without moving taxes too much, I don't think the people object to those moves. I've never had them complain about it when we made their street better. I'm fucking right, I'm not.
I love my gravel street, thank you. Can you go back to, there was a slide where you had put up the mill rate, and then if a house was like a hundred thousand dollars, what the tax change would be at that current, that mill rate? Oops, so, so this one, this bird would go where it's supposed to. That's at a hundred and twenty-five thousand, that example.
Oh, I thought it was one twenty-five.
But this one does one twenty-five, one seventy-five, and two twenty-five.
And you said if we went to want the full, the extra one fifty and change, that it would raise the mill rate twenty-eight cents?
Approximately thirty cents. And so here, if you look at this one, which is the sheet that you guys had received before, I adjusted from twenty, twenty-nine sixty-seven to twenty-nine ninety-seven, which changed the taxes. And you can see that, I would certainly want to verify this and not rely on just quickly adjusting a number here. But you can see that adjustment, it changed it from, that changed it radically.
I think I came up with, because I came up with the new, that mill rate would be twenty-nine ninety-five, a hundred thousand dollars would be twenty-eight dollars for every hundred thousand. That's what I came up with. So on a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, it's an increase of forty-two and a half dollars. That was just some rough math.
And if we look at the values that we have here, we've got a hundred and fifty-eight, a hundred and fifty-nine right now. I think this is, the sheet that you guys. I think this is, the sheet that you guys show, yeah. This one's a little bit different than what you had, but you can see from 22 to 23, there was that decrease listed. So when we look at the one structured or property valued at 158, there was going to be a decrease of 35.81 from the action of the proposed budget. But essentially what you're saying, it kind of just cancels that, cancels that out. And it would be, after we factor in the credits and all of that, approximately the same, roughly, the same as what it is this year. So not lowering, not necessarily raising, at least maybe marginally, but roughly cancels that out, yeah.
I guess, so you, you've used the term several times tonight, we have healthy balances. So then it's, we have healthy balances, do we need to additionally tax our citizens?
That is up to you.
I'm just saying, it kind of poses a quandary of, you know, I guess if I was a citizen and I heard, man, the city's got healthy balances, but what if my taxes are going up? I don't know how that would, that would sit with me.
So, and I feel like it's, it's an odd position to be in because this is, this is not a conversation that is typical, right? To have this dilemma. And, you know, as, as an employee, right, it's, we could always use more. There's, there's never enough money to do everything that we want to do, that sort of thing. But as a citizen, you know, maybe not of this community, but as a tax paying person, I, I certainly have feelings about if, if there was an opportunity to do something like this. And we know, I mean realistically, we, it's reasonable, we understand that, you know, a $40 reduction or a $20 reduction, people aren't going to be over the moon and, you know, singing everybody's praises for that. But it is a reduction and it is important. And when we have the ability to do so and not be in a situation where we're setting ourselves up for likely or imminent catastrophe as a result, why not take that opportunity? Why not take that opportunity and, and demonstrate to the community that these are the decisions that you will make? And quite frankly, this didn't necessarily even have to be a conversation, but wanting for transparency and, and people to understand that this isn't an easy decision and it's not even a decision where we had to walk in here tonight. We could have maximized, they could have put forward a recommendation to maximize that available levy. And so I think it's, speaks to your guys' intent and character. So I applaud that. And I, like I said, I am very confident in the numbers that were presented to you, that we will be in a good position and we won't be sacrificing things. Certainly unexpected things can come up, but we also know that we have two thirds of our available debt of, debt we can take on. As the mayor had mentioned, we know that there's going to be requests for city participation in economic development. We know that. We also know that we're going to have to borrow likely if that's a decision that's made and we have the ability to do that. And that very same marginal either increase or break even point that we would see for the taxpayers, we can achieve that when that time comes.
Plus, we got to look out for Aaron. He doesn't really get yelled at when the people's taxes come.
Who made, who made the streets department budget? Because we don't have anybody in charge of that right now, right?
I did.
So it went down and is that because you cut some of the projects or?
No. That's a result of looking at past financial performance as well as looking at anticipated work coming up. So that budget, when we look at years prior, they would have X amount budgeted for, but they would only spend a certain amount, which was consistently less than what was budgeted for. And so when you have repetitive over budgeting is what I would classify that as, it doesn't make sense to continue budgeting at that level unless there's something that's different from the years past.
Is there a reason they didn't fix the streets then? I mean, they had the money to do it, but they just don't?
We, we budgeted for like street overlays, so like not projects, but the streets that would just donate utilities, just put a whatever overlay, a new pavement on it. When I started six years ago, it's been a piece that we request the finance every year to increase that. So we increased it from 100,000 last year's budget to 150 this year. And we continue to increase that. And we said in finance that we'd like to keep increasing it until we get to a point to where we're caught up ahead of, so like when we look at streets that are repaired. The, the overlays and what we're doing and how they've been done has been, you know, we, we try to, like Terry in the past would pick some of the worst ones, the dimney utilities, right? Because we don't want to do an overlay on something that's going to get ripped up two years later. And so identifying those and has his list, which he passed on, and I would assume the current crew will continue to do that. Plus, we get feedback from our citizens of, when's my street going to be fixed? And, you know, some of those are on the list and some aren't, but that's that 150,000. And on the 100,000, like this last year, how many streets did we do? I mean, I don't know all the street names, I just know where they're at.
Well, it definitely doesn't go as far as it used to.
Every year, because inflation's been eating away at our ability to do it.
But it's something that we're conscious of and we're increasing that. So if you're, you're thinking of repairing the streets, there's, there's money that we're budgeting to like get ahead of that. I think some of the other differences, like when you see it less, there may have been a major equipment purchase, a dump truck, there could have been 400,000 that isn't budgeted this year. So you take that out of there and there's a big decrease, you know, to this year. So some of those things that aren't transparent in the budget. But I, I think from years past, because I've gone from, I didn't know what anything was and here it is, you guys need to prove it, to now understanding some of it. But I think in years past, whatever the levy is, somebody, I'm speculating here, that numbers just get moved around to match the levy. And what happened this year, for the first time, like the budget process in the past, we'd have department heads come in, say, in finance with their wish list. And every year, I would be, I don't know what, what's a good word here, I'd be like pounding my head because I know some of these things are complete wants and we don't need them. But they're giving them because we got to meet the levy and we got to spend the money. If we don't spend it, we're going to lose it. And so this year, Ashley spent two months, three months, sitting with the department heads before they even came to finance and had them trim that stuff out. We have one department head here that could attest to that because their, their wish lists, you know, got smaller, but I, you know, I was thankful that I didn't have to sit in person with somebody, you know, saying, I wanted this, because in my mind, from running a business, I knew we didn't have to spend that money. So when we take 150,000 on a budget this year, you know, that number's nothing and it isn't going to be anything on anybody's taxes for the most part that we care, but are we doing our due diligence and being fiscally responsible? Do you want to be like everybody else and just, here's a levy limit, we're going to max it out? Who cares? And then the money isn't spent well within all the departments. And for do we want to be fiscally responsible and make sure that we're holding department heads accountable for each one of their expenditures, which, you know, with the new software system and how things are laid out, having a budget in front of a department head is what Ashley's been working on. Like, here's your budget, work within it. Before, there were some departments that, they just ran, they had no clue what they had. So it's, it's, I mean, some of the questions you're asking, Connie, are exact questions, I mean, are going through my head. And from when I started to today, I mean, I completely understand.
And also, just with the street program, there have been years where the companies that do the overlays have run out of time to, to do projects. Hasn't happened, you know, every year, but there were certainly several years when, when that actually happened, when they couldn't spend all of the money because they couldn't get to work there. So we don't do that ourselves, that's contracted out. So we also have to rely on somebody else's schedule to make that happen as well.
How much is an unrestricted impulse to be out? If it's not?
Well.
I mean, when we talk about like, well, what if this comes up, where this, we have money that we can do a resolution, that we can take care of something. So our total budget is how much? It's total?
So it was the 12? Let's see. Let me, I don't know why this is not, just over 12 million.
So 150,000 on 12 million is what? I mean, I would, I would rather see us be fiscally responsible, hold our department heads accountable and knowing that we're, we're financially stable, that if we need something, we have the money to do it. We just have to, you know, whether it's a resolution, pull it out of something that's unrestricted or do something else. But, you know, the whole, like some of these things we're talking about, like that's the budget process, like we get them in the budget for the following year. So.
And we do still have, you know, dollars available from ARPA that we will need to spend. Not much, a little over 100,000 we have in, in ARPA. But another thing, you know, to keep in mind, right now, what you're seeing is RLF. So this is almost 600,000 dollars that, that we have, that we can be using for things like economic development. And there are other accounts as well, but that one's, that one is an important one to be aware of and is the landfill account that we talked about earlier. We have over 600,000 set aside for that as well, just since we were mentioning it. But like we talked about when I had Pool 4 shown, this next sheet that I'll show you is all of our state pool accounts. So this is Pool 1. You can see, we did have, as, as Aaron advised in his treasurer's report, we did have that shared revenue payment come through. So you can see what our balance is right now in Pool 1. Again, here's that landfill account, there's the panorama account related to the TIF, Pool 4, which is what we were talking about with the, the outlay and other projects that we've designated. Affordable housing, so we had, we talked about RLF just a second ago. Affordable housing is another one, we have over a million dollars that exactly for the purpose of housing, which is, you know, obviously of priority to everyone. And then we have this pool from the prior TIDS that we had. So there, like I said, we have healthy account balances and we are in the position where we have a choice oftentimes whether or not to borrow or use some, draw down some of those, those reserves that we have, depending on the project, or to reallocate.
And some of that 150,000, like Billy said something to me before we started, like the different line items in his budget, a whole bunch of them, you don't even know what they are. And there's a lot in the budget that got trimmed out this year. Like a department might have $2,000 for pens and pencils or something that never got spent. And those got moved to where they needed to be and trimmed. So that's why you see a reduction in some of the budgets and trying to clean some of that up. But I think, I think the way we look at this, I wish you would have been here, and I probably have a copy I can get you, Connie, of like my first years. I'm trying to like decipher it and there's a column on there that I was kept looking at. I'm like, what is this? And then I was sold, don't even look at that column, this is not, we can't get it off there, our software won't allow it. And it didn't even make any sense to me. And I'm like, how is a department head supposed to look at their budget and understand what it is if the common person can't like look at it? And so now at least you can read it and try to get the, the accounting lines like adjusted so a department head can look at it and work within their budget. Because I think it was so old and so complicated before that, you know, you couldn't hand it to anybody. I mean, my past like budgets I looked at, there was always a percent of how much was spent, you know, in the head accounts. So when I'm looking at it monthly, I know what account has what and I can look at it quick and decipher where money has been spent. But we weren't doing that before and that's something that Ashley is, is doing now, trying to make sure that department heads, you know, know what they have, they can work within their budget and be held accountable.
Well, and I remember the budget package used to be like a half a rainbow paper too.
Yeah, yeah.
My first year, I think you said I won the award for asking the most questions. I'm like, what is this stuff? So yeah, this is really, form ended it and kind of cinched it now much better.
They just get the page overs on here at the border.
They should have been printed this time. You should have printed page overs this time. Well, there is. Mine are printed on it.
I have the one from the other meeting.
The one from the other meeting that's printed on it.
You know, and our people call, yeah. I, I think another, to, I, to expound on what Ryan is saying. It has been a lot of, well, that's, that's what we always did, right? So whatever the, the number was last year will be the number this year. And that doesn't make a whole lot of sense in a lot of areas, right? And so what Ryan was, was detailing was really, okay, that might have been the number before. And we started this process last year and so it was, I think Billy especially had, did a great job with his budget and understanding what to do. But then we had people who've never done it before, this was their first year, so it was a lot of learning. And relying on the number that was there last year as, as your guide, as the number one guy, guide, doesn't make sense and it didn't make sense ever, especially now when we're kind of putting things in the right place and, and tightening things up. That wasn't the only, the only avenue that people had to rely on. And so what our department heads, what our employees are being asked to do to probably the greatest degree that they ever had, was to really consider what you have coming up. What needs to be done, what, what would you like to be done? And forecast, anticipate trends, anticipate things happening. Reach out to folks in your network, right? And, and talk to them about the things that they see coming down the line. And I think a really, you know, simple example of this is COVID happened and at that time, I was working in the world of permitting. Never did I expect, could I have forecasted in my budget that all of a sudden we'd have a global pandemic and everybody wanted to build cabins in the county I was working in. And so all of a sudden, there was a lot more revenue than we ever anticipated, but that trend continued. So in the next budget, factoring in, you know, the increase because of COVID and the, you know, the circumstances that were affecting not just Wisconsin, not just the county, but our entire country, had to be factored into the equation in order to come up with an accurate forecast. And so those sort of things are what our departments are being asked to do. And that just wasn't a conversation that was had before. It was just, that's what we do and we're going to do it again. So I, I'm sincerely proud of every one of the departments because I think they've done an excellent job and they've been really amenable to this process, which is not a pleasant process to go through from a department's perspective because you want to protect the resources that you have. Once they're gone, you don't usually get them back. And fortunately, again, because we are in a healthy position, we don't have situations where departments are competing against one another. So you'll often see that where departments go, we know we all want the same pool of money and we can't all have all of the money and so we have to fight one another for the money. We don't go through that here. And that is huge. That's, that's remarkable and it validates the fact that our departments haven't been Now, if you do really want to spend that money to maximize the levy, another option might be cost of living adjustments that are greater than what that are greater than what are budgeted for, which is about 3.2%. That's what's incorporated within your budget. I had to say that.
Okay, any more discussion on that point or any other point based on what Ashley has presented? Okay, so could you show us, oh, it's still up there, what the mill rate will be if there are no changes to what's presented? And the impact, so just to make it real simple, Ashley, what do we expect the impact to be on a typical property taxpayer?
I don't know for sure.
Well, I'm right, but...
But that is why we have these scenarios.
Yeah.
So if you're at 125, 175, or 225, that's what you can likely expect to experience. And Ashley, we'll go with this, I think probably this is, this would be a common one that we would see. So at 125, $125,000 of assessed value, you could anticipate, you know, this breakdown. So from the city, it'd be about 1,100, to the county, 1,000, to the schools, 1,600, Southwest, 170. That is likely what I think many people would experience.
How much more is that than last year for them?
It's not more.
It's actually less, isn't it?
Yeah, and if you refer to the other night when I gave you that breakdown, which actually shows what this would do to your taxes, you will notice that everybody's taxes, based on these figures we talked about today, decreased from between $25 and I think the most was 45.
Okay, further discussion on the 2024 levy limit increase on total levy? If there's not, then indicate a motion to approve the 2024 levy limit increase and total levy as presented.
Some more.
With a motion, is there a second?
Oh.
Mr. Melby with a second. Okay, further discussion? Okay, hearing none. Aaron will need a roll call.
Alder Person, Hoppin' John?
Here.
Hi.
Tepley?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Walters?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Downs?
Aye.
Cairns?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thanks. Item 3, consider approval of the 2024 budget. Anything else you want to present or go over again? And to any questions or comments from the council on the 2024 budget? All right, hearing none. Editing a motion to approve the 2024 budget as presented.
Some more.
The motion from Ms. Tepley, is there a second?
Second.
We got that one. Mr. Downs? Okay, any discussion further on the 2024 budget? Hearing none, we'll need a roll call, please.
Alder Person, Tepley?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Walters?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Downs?
Aye.
Cairns?
Aye.
Hoppin' John?
Aye.
All right. Levy limit increase, total levy and budget all approved. Next item on the agenda is to adjourn the meeting. Is there a motion?
No adjourn.
Motion for Mr. Downs, is there a second? Second for Mr. McCarthy wins that one. All in favor of returning tonight's meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Good job.
Thank you.